To the Thursday, May 22, 2025 Women's Commission. If everybody will please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, he never.
Just to go to how far in forward.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Gabby Maxman, here. Adrienne Tissier.
Here.
Eleanor Serrato.
Here.
Do I need to read about the public record? I will, just in case we're supposed to, and we don't. This is in regard to all public records relating to an open session item on this agenda, which are not exempt from disclosure pursuant to the California Public Records Act, that are distributed to a majority of the legislative body and will be available for public inspection at the City Clerk's Office in City Hall, located at 333 90th Street, Daly City, California during normal business hours, at the same time that the public records are distributed or made available to the legislative body. Okay. We're now to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Women's Commission of April 24, 2025?
I move to approve the minutes.
There's a motion to approve. We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you. Any oral comments? I don't see anybody running to the dais. Okay, Consent Agenda? We don't have any Consent Agenda items. So we are down to our main attraction, under Communications. Rosie Tejada is here. She's with the County of San Mateo Commission on the Status of Women. Welcome, Rosie, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
I was thought, just to make it simple, maybe you could just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself before you jump into things you've been doing with the commission?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. First of all, I want to thank all of you for serving on this really important commission. You know, Daly City is the largest city in the county, and I think it's great that we have a Women's Commission now. So I've been on the County Commission on the Status of Women for the last two years, and I'm entering my 12th year as a trustee with the Jefferson Union High School District, which serves Daly City, Pacifica, Brisbane, and Colma. So I grew up in Daly City, I raised my children here. I went to all the public, I went to the public schools in Daly City, went to, graduated from Jefferson High School. My son graduated from Westmore, my daughter also from Jefferson. And I've helped, yes, starting as a PTA mom, I eventually got involved with the school districts in leading funding measures. And so I got to know the community pretty well. And my first bond measure that I ran, I was, it was in, I was in way over my head. I didn't know what I was doing, but then I just decided, hey, I'm just gonna do, I'm gonna put on my PTA mom hat and do it the way I do it. And we passed a $33 million bond.
Awesome.
And a big chunk of that was spent on remodeling Thomas R. Policyto School, my old school. And just to see the looks on those kids' faces being at a school that was just so much more beautiful than it was, and with more high-tech stuff, was really gratifying. And then I ended up running for an appointment on the High School Board, and so I've been there since 2014. So with, so for the last two years that I've been on the Commission on the Status of Women, we worked on, I could, if you go to the website, it has a lot on there. And it's www.smcgov.org/csw. And the thing that we were working on since I started in 2013 is the, what we call Fund the Future. And it's, we developed this report to, so our, the Commission on the Status of Women makes recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, that's what we do. But, but they have work plans. They decide on, you know, there are certain things that may be of concern to women and girls in the county. And so they develop a work plan that would cover about two years, because it can't happen overnight. So when I started, the focus was on launching a movement to build women's economic power. And so with that, we broke into two different groups. And one was, the one I worked on was on childcare and caregiving. Because we know that women make up over 50% of the population of San Mateo County. And, but that's, there was, is there a childcare crisis in the county? And so by, we had commissioners who worked on different councils, nonprofits that have to do with childcare. And there are all these different reports that we could go to. And we also sent out our own survey. And we got, and then we interviewed people who were women, who were willing to be interviewed and give their anecdotal experiences, which were often really, often were really heartbreaking. You know, they, I mean, there are some women who, you know, they could not have, they're, they would be on a waitlist for the, the public childcare. And, but then, you know, it was taking so long that they couldn't work. So, because they had to stay at home with their child. It, it was real, it's really hard to hear these stories, but they exist in our county, which is so wealthy. And then also another focus is women's wealth health, which, you know, women in San Mateo County, especially single women, single mothers and women of color are disproportionately affected by low wages, career interruptions due to caregiving, and a lack of financial literacy. And so we met a lot of women who said, if I had known more about how to save. Even people on our own commission, like myself, wished I knew more about, you know, saving, and have, be more financially literate. And so by, so we came up with this Fund the Future report. And, and it's called Fund the Future: A Call for Durable and Coordinated Investment in Childcare and Women's Economic Health in San Mateo County. And one of the things that we, we had some recommendations. And one of the things that we recommended was to create and invest in an office of women and children, which the Board of Supervisors did do, based on our recommendation. So that was one thing, but some of the other things is gonna be, well, you make recommendations, but it's up to the Board of Supervisors to see if any of it's really feasible. I'm sure they want to do it, but is it economically feasible? So they were able to create this office of women and children. I don't know what they've done with it yet, it's just very new. And so it would be to address the issues impacting women and children. And so facilitating access to crucial services. But then we also asked them to look at, you know, promote pay equity, increase awareness of savings programs like Cal Savers and Cal Kids. So that way it'll help more, more residents, especially women. And, and help with future education also. And then enhance financial literacy and career pathways, and address the shortage of childcare services. It's really hard, you know, to come up with a comprehensive plan. But we tried. So, but it, so we're still continuing with Fund the Future. That's a subcommittee that's, that's still working right now. We'll be sending out another survey. And they're going to, they're actually digging deeper into some, things like Cal Savers and, you know, Cal Kids and retirement, how to, and also helping our seniors, you know, save, or how can, how can they, you know, live in this county? And have, because we met a lot of seniors who don't have a lot of money. What, what can they turn to, what resources can they turn to at this stage in their lives? So, and then what the committee, subcommittee that I'm working on right now is on community outreach and engagement. Because we're the Commission on the Status of Women, but there are a lot of people don't know who we are. So how do we go out there and reach people? And we're going to have our own survey. And there are five supervisory districts. And each district will host what we call a Listen and Learn. And it's, you'll be going, we'll be going out to that district. Our meetings are in Redwood City, which is not convenient for some people. You know, I have to commute from, I live in Pacifica now, I have to commute from Pacifica. Or sometimes when I'm working in the city, I have to drive straight down to Redwood City right after work. So we're going to go to where the people are. And so whether it's coast side, I'm going to host one in District 5 in Daly City. And I'm looking at probably February. And this is where we hope to invite women and allies who, we want to know what has, have things changed since our last survey, almost two years ago? And with any change in, you know, politics now? How has that, especially economics right now? Have things changed, you have, what are your concerns now? So that's going to be part of my outreach, and I, I'm going to invite all of you to attend. And I'm going to partner, I'm reaching out to community partners to help with, you know, well, child, we don't call it childcare, we call it child watching. Providing food, you know, interpretation, interpreters, just to get, we, we just want to reach out to the women in Daly City and parts of South San Francisco to share with us what their concerns are, and to learn more about the commission also. So that's what we're working on right now. But I, I think, you know, what I really like about the commission and the county is you have people from, I'm the only elected official on that commission, and only one really affiliated with Daly City. I grew up here. Everyone thinks I'm Daly City, because this is my, this is my hometown, and I raised my children here, I grew up here, even though I live in Pacifica. But, you know, serving on the school board for the last, you know, 11 years, this is my district. So I just thought it was better suited to host, for me to host that in Daly City. Because we don't get a lot of North County representation. As you probably know, lots of times, you know, there are county events or every, there's hardly any, or commissions, and there's hardly any representation from North County. It's like a mystery to them, but, you know, we're here, we have, we, we're like the most populated city in all of San Mateo County.
But I think you raised a really good issue, and I faced it for 12 years.
Yes.
They do all their meetings in the southern part of the county. And I think it's great that you're bringing them to the districts.
We have to.
Now, have you thought of your location for when you do the Listen and Learn?
Well, I've already, it's going to be in our new district office at the Jefferson Union High School, right by Westmore.
Okay, great.
I think it'd be really conducive. I spoke with our superintendent, and she would love to have us there.
That's excellent.
So I've got, I've got a lot of planning. And as you know, you probably all have things that you've planned after the holidays, and, you know, everyone's kind of burnt out. But, you know, I, I know it's, February seems pretty far away, but it'll come up pretty fast, especially when you're planning. But I run funding measures, I think this would be, you know, a fun thing to do.
Well, I would imagine we could probably get it on our, on the TV with all the activities, you know, just be able to give you some help in getting the word out.
That would be great.
You might even consider, because this is great for us tonight, because it gives us a lot of food for thought, and we'll certainly try to participate and do what we can with your Listen and Learn. But sometimes it's good to go to each of the cities, even with, they usually give you like 10 minutes to present. But, but some people do actually watch the council things on TV, and it gets agendized. So if you don't go to the meeting, even if you don't watch it, it has that agenda, it, you know. So 10-minute spiel in front of the dais, in front of the councils is a great way to get the word out.
Yeah, that's true.
I, I have one more question, though. On the survey, you did the first survey, and you said you're gonna do a second survey, but it's gonna be a district survey versus a countywide survey, is that correct?
No, it's a countywide.
Oh, it is, it's countywide survey, okay. And when you did the countywide survey, was it for all women in San Mateo County? Or was it a, okay, it wasn't like a poll, it was a true survey to all the women in?
Right, and so the, it was hard, you know, we go to events, and you get a QR code and something, you just ask people to fill out the survey there. But it was a really comprehensive survey, so you had to be able to be on your phone for 10 minutes, or I think we tried to get it done to eight minutes. But still, you know, it's kind of daunting if you're just going somewhere and, hey, can you fill out the survey? And, but people did, you know, people did sort of, we, we wanted more participation, but I think that it gave us a good representation of, you know, people in the county. Not, not as many, I mean, I sent the survey out to my, my contacts here, and didn't get as much participation as we would have liked from North County, and especially Daly City. We really wanted more people from Daly City. But it, it, it was really hard. And I think if we do, if you do a survey here, you're gonna have to use all your powers to get people to fill it out.
Well, maybe that's where we could be helpful. In the council, maybe someone on the council could say it at a council meeting. Surveys are in the mail, or however, you're gonna hear phones and stuff.
Or utilize the city's social media.
Yeah, social, yeah.
Yes, yes, the Daily Wire.
The Daily Wire and also the, the pages, yeah.
What is it? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Linked, LinkedIn, they have, yeah.
Definitely. Thank you.
Any other questions?
My question is around prioritization. Did you use the survey to guide the prioritization of the financial issues first? Or like, how did you decide that that was going to be the sort of main focus of the commission?
It, it happened before I started on the commission. My understanding is, well, this is how we, I've seen it done in other meetings, and where we'll have our retreat, and it's facilitated by someone. But then also, you, you jot down, you just go to these large whiteboards, and you come up with ideas of things that you want to work on. And then everyone discusses it, you know, as a group, and we whittle it down to a few topics. And so you, we only choose two that we think is probably the most important. And so I think that, I think because of after COVID, they, that's why they focused on the wealth health aspect of, the financial literacy aspect. And that's why they came up with that. But then they realized a big part of that is, you know, lack of childcare, because that was coming up for people. And then, then they did the survey. Then they created a survey asking questions about financial literacy, what do you know, how was your savings, you know, which, the demographics, of course, and then childcare issues. And then a broad question of, are you willing to be interviewed? And that helped us with, we, we added those quotes to our report, because that resonates, these stories are really heartfelt, and they're real, from real residents, and that resonated with the supervisors. Because you really need that. Otherwise, you're just reading text and with nothing behind it.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, yeah? Just, just out of curiosity, when you, like, when you're working on these subcommittees for, say, if you have a retreat and you pare it down to, say, three topics that you want to really dig into, so does your committee, I know yours is larger than ours, obviously, but then do you create subcommittees and different people work on it? Or does staff work on it? Who works on that?
Okay, so it's the commissioners. So I believe we have 15 right now. So they're, and you break up into groups, and you decide which one you want to work on the most. And then it's up to that group to decide where we're, where are we gonna go, how are, what is our focus? We'll devise a work plan. And then you, that subcommittee meets separately. Because we only meet once a month, like you do. So they meet separately, so, and we devise a timeline of when we want to get a draft work plan together. And then, and present it to everyone at our, at the meeting, and then vote on it, approve it. And so, but you have to work on the work plans together. So we were having weekly check-ins, and to help us, like, there is part of the work plan, like for engagement, we're also going to have a Women's Equality Day event. So we have, you know, three other people within our subcommittee working on that alone. So they're in charge of that part of the work plan, you know, organizing it, that sort of thing. And then each, then there are leads for each district to do the Listen and Learns. So each person has their own, like, mini-work plan for that. For the other, for the Fund the Future Subcommittee, I'm, I haven't dug, dug down into what they're doing, but they have, like, multiple sub-subcommittees within that, where they have different people working on different parts of that work plan. So theirs is pretty expansive, well, ours is too. But, you know, so they, I think they meet also every week.
So for your district, Listen and Learn, is this, is, are you, before that, are you gonna do the same survey you did before? Or are these, are you gonna have new questions based on input you've gotten since the last one?
Yes, so we, we're going to have new questions, and it's not gonna be as, as long.
And then do you have a subcommittee now that's working with you on District 5 for the, for the Listen and Learn?
I'm the subcommittee, so, I'm the lead.
Okay.
But I, you know, and I'll probably, we're, all the commissioners will be attending each Listen and Learn, because it's going to be held during a regularly scheduled commission meeting. And so we're all going to be there. And so with those Listen and Learns, each, each, each commissioner, well, we'll have two commissioners at each, we'll have like a table, they're spread out. So we'll have small groups of women speaking, you know, just sharing at a table. So we'll have, and we haven't devised what the questions will be. We still have to be more specific. But, so one commissioner will be at the table, ask facilitating. And then the other commissioner will take notes. And then we'll come together later with our findings.
Through the chair, I believe we have a public comment, public comment on this.
Sure. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Emma Yon. Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to be here at this exciting meeting. What great information, thank you, Rosie. And I was just going to say was, I agree with everything everybody's saying, but wouldn't it be nice to be able, since you're it with the, with this project specifically that addresses what we need in Daly City? Perhaps our commission or people involved in here in Daly City might be able to help in some way. You know, even if it's just you letting us know to, to come to the event. The only other thing I was gonna mention was when I was hearing you speak about letting the public know, as, there's always these upcoming events we have, right? Like DCPLA is gonna have, and I can't promise this, but DCPLA is gonna have the Art and Lit up at Cerimony Shopping Center. What a great place to have a table, where you would be able to be there to speak to the public and have your survey, or tell them, I don't know, do you do QR code? So they would be able to, I'm just thinking out loud is that perhaps there's some events that we are going to have between now and February, where you could be there, and, or somehow we could help, so.
Thanks, Teresa.
Absolutely, I would love that.
The other, as you were talking, I was thinking about, we have this bullying sign right outside the City Clerk's Office, so we can put one of those stand-up signs permanently here with the QR code, so that anytime somebody comes into City Hall, it's front and center.
Fantastic, thank you.
And I agree with the.
Sorry, I signed up the city, I don't.
I did the same.
It's an idea.
It's a suggestion, it's a suggestion.
No promises.
Yeah, I was just gonna say was, I agree that it, it's, it makes sense, instead of reinventing the wheel, that if you're doing all this work, the legwork, that we could benefit from your survey, perhaps you could share the needs and maybe help with the focus.
Oh, definitely, because I think, you know, we've got someone working on the survey now, but it would definitely be helpful if you would reach out to your networks, you know, here in Daly City, to get people to answer the survey. Yeah, and definitely, because we've taken the survey results from other agencies and used that to help as, as data and resources for our reports. Because if, like you said, if someone's already done the work, let's benefit from it, because then it'll help others.
Sure.
And it'll help our work, you know.
And I'd like to see how proud I am of our commission. And it's something that I feel that we are all gonna benefit, the entire, all the women, girls, women in Daly City, we're gonna benefit from your work. So thank you for being here, and I just wanted to say thank you, thank you. And let me know what I can do.
Oh, you know I will.
I know you will.
Thank you, Teresa. I had another question. You mentioned this new office of women and children, and the Board actually passed that.
Yes.
Was it just recently, or?
It was, I think, might have been January, it was very recent.
Do you know who's heading it? Do you know?
I don't.
Okay, I'm just curious, okay. No, I think it's a great idea, you know. I know Supervisor Spear has her foundation that deals about women and children.
Right.
So I would think that that's, she would probably have a lot of information through her foundation and all about some of these issues affecting, affecting them. But I think that's great.
I think that the other thing I was thinking about in terms of the survey, and sort of the chicken or the egg, is, you, you mentioned your commission is very large, you know, 15, 15 people. So when you come together in a room, there's a diversity of opinion, but there's also a lot of different opinions. So when you do your brainstorming, you have a lot of, you know, different people sort of putting things on the board. And I guess my worry with a smaller commission is that our, our focus is not, it, it's broad, but there's just less voices and less perspectives. And so I'm curious about whether or not the survey for us actually would help us determine what our focus should be versus us working together, sort of from our, you know, privileged positions, coming up with what we think is, is, is best. And so I would be more curious about putting some sort of survey together around women's issues specifically in Daly City, and what women of our city, you know, what their needs are. Because, yes, I'm representative of people, but, you know, we all have different, different places and privileges that we come from.
Absolutely, that's, that's how we approached it. And then also, so our, like, our job is to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. So I would imagine your, your task is to make recommendations to the city.
Correct.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so, like, I, I agree. I mean, how do you know, I mean, you're involved in the community, you, you have a wide range of people that you deal with, but how do you really know what the women of Daly City are facing unless?
You ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I also think the listen and learn, since it's in the North County.
Yes.
Because we, you know, there really are no borders when you're up this way. You know, we cross over into Brisbane, Colma, all that in South City. So I think that, that will be helpful for us also.
Agreed.
It'll, hopefully, if we do a survey before then, then if we, this should reinforce what we're hearing. But if we do a survey and it doesn't reinforce, we're hearing even more that we didn't hear in the survey, because maybe we didn't get enough of it.
Right.
In the way of numbers. But that'll be, the onus will be on us to do that outreach, to get it out to more women and do that kind of stuff.
Right.
So, and that's, and I also think what you mentioned, and I know we have a smaller group, but sometimes it is good to have a retreat and sit down and talk about it, what those things are we want to do, at least two or three things we want to try to do. If it's a survey, participate with you and be helpful in any way for the listen and learn. And then, you know, after that, with all those things, then regroup and look at what, again, like you have a work plan. What are we going to try to do? You know, we only have five of us to work on it. And in committees, it has, it's even smaller.
Exactly.
So, you know, we're not going to be able to do 100 things, but if there's one or two things we really want to do, then we can put our efforts into that.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
This was very helpful.
Yes. Thank you so much, Rosie.
Happy to be here and I'm at your disposal at any time. And I will be reaching out to all of you.
Please, please do.
Soon as, yeah, I'll let you know, yeah.
I have to say, when I was on the board, I was the liaison to the commission on the status of women from the board. A long time ago, though. You know, things have changed dramatically. But it's interesting to hear what, you know, at the end of the day, there's still a lot of the same issues. Women and children, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Poverty, job issues, equity, pay salary equity. I mean, a lot of that hasn't gone away, which is really unfortunate because those topics were really on, on fire when we were down there and it really hasn't changed a lot. So we're not, I think having this office of women and children, because you're going to be able to fund it, which means you're going to be able to address more things and you've got people on your board down there that really care about this issue. So I think, you know, it'd be nice to see more of a dent made in these things.
Yeah, something.
That's great.
Definitely.
It's wonderful. Well, thank you for presenting. I thoroughly enjoyed it and I think my colleagues did too.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up. It's really important.
And like I said, don't hesitate to call any one of us. We're happy to help.
Not.
And you know, Teresa, you can just, you know, she'll be all over us if you mention something to her, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, well, then we'll just move on a little bit to our meeting. You can either stay or you need to go. Don't, it's up to you. It won't take long, I don't think. Let's just. Okay. Now we're under reports. Does the commission, commissioners have any reports they'd like to make? Anything you want to share?
Maybe, I don't know if this is something, but to me it was. In front of Wendy's, there's a homeless lady there with all of her belongings. And I saw that yesterday and I was thinking, we're women, she's a woman, what can we do to help this woman? Like, where do we go? Where do, where do we knock on her door? What, like, I don't know. I know, Teresa.
Somebody give an answer.
Sure.
So just, just so you know, I know my heart breaks because I live near there, so I see her. The police and, you know, contacts, they've been trying to work with her. And there's some, at some point, there was two ladies. And they.
They used to be at top of the hill.
Yeah, they, they migrate back and forth and they have their packages and, and they're very happy where they're at right now. They've been offered help. And if you ever see anything like that, you know, you can let the police know they have a, they have special, specialists, I should say, that go out and, and speak with them. We had somebody encapment, they put a tent up, two ladies at, near Duggan's, and they came and they helped them out. And, you know, we do have people to do that. I know it breaks your heart, breaks my heart whenever I see them. And there's a gentleman on the other side that likes to hang out over at Bank of America.
Yeah, I just recently saw him.
Yeah. They, they are being approached and, and asked and invited and they choose not to. Yeah.
Thank you, Teresa.
Sorry.
Any other comments or questions? That was good.
I guess my report is slightly self-serving. I, I planned a Jewish-American heritage night event celebration yesterday and we had a beautiful evening, amazing representation, a lot of women in the room. We had two female performers. Mirina Malgar, who's the supervisor from San Francisco, came and spoke. And it was a beautiful event and I'm grateful to our mayor and all of the city employees that helped make it happen.
Great, thank you. Okay, staff report?
I just have one update on the website that we are currently still working on all of the recommendations from our last meeting, so that should be an update on the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, if that's all our business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Great job, guys. What a great meeting. Ah, I'm going to go home and put my pajamas on.
Are your guests gone?
They're gone.